Okay, we are streaming.
All right, welcome everyone. I'll call the August 20th North Watcom District 21 Board of Fishers meeting to order and start with roll call. Bruce Ansel.
John Crawford.
Scott Fisher.
Jason Vanderveen.
Henry, are you officially on our?
I'll say Henry Hollander. How's that?
That works.
Been awhile.
It's okay. We'll, we'll prompt you. We got notice from Commissioner Bosman that, yeah, he's running a little bit late due to a work commitment, but he should be joining us here shortly. Public comment is suspended due to the governor's proclamation and so we'll move on to the volunteer pension board meeting. First item is the approval of July 16 minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Chief, we have a volunteer separation?
Yes, sir. Mr. David Keeney, who has been with the district for four years, has elected to resign his position as a volunteer just due to family constraints, COVID, and thanks us for his time here and learned a lot, pointed out, especially Lieutenant Wesley Smith and firefighter Russ Briskin as being great mentors to him, but he has chosen to, to separate.
All right, we need a motion to approve his separation.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Um, so we, we are losing volunteers, but it sounds like maybe in the near future, we're gonna gain some tender operators. Is that?
Yes, sir. We've got, we've got one that's got his medical physical next week and then a couple more tender operators that are in the pipeline. And we've recently kind of revamped how we do some training for the, for the tender operators and we've got some of them that have kind of been hovering in orbit. We've got them up, got Evap done and getting them on the road, doing some, some roadwork. So we're, we're trying to bolster that tender group. We, we see the average age and realize that we need to replenish it a little bit.
Very good. All right. Anything else before the volunteer pension board? Chief, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll move to adjourn the meeting. How about I just adjourn the meeting? And I will open the regular board of commissioners meeting, the first item being the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the meeting minutes from July 16, the July 23rd special meeting minutes, staff reports, financial reports, voucher, payroll and benefits. Some policies and procedures, which I will comment on once we move to approve the agenda and I'll read in the revenues and expenditures at that point as well. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved twice and second and once?
Sounds good.
So, um, discussion, I, I have one thing, I'll read the totals in. The total revenue for July was 128,196 and 41 cents. The total expenditures in August was 696,776 and 80 cents. The direct deposit payroll for employees was 333,334 and 29 cents. Payroll taxes, 72,832 and 56 cents. Benefits vouchers, 201,332 and 81 cents. Monthly expenditure vouchers, 89,277 and 11 cents. In regards to the policies and procedures, we've had this list before us for a couple of months now. I did not receive any feedback input from any of the commissioners. Did you get anything back, chief?
No, sir.
So, um, these are, are vetted by the, the company that writes them, reviewed by our administrative staff. There's one thing I noted in the performance evaluation policy was last month, there was a reference to the actual form that we're gonna use to do those evaluations. And I know due to a, a lot of ongoing business and other things on your plate, chief, that that form isn't complete yet. And so I would suggest that we remove performance evaluations from sort of the blanket approval and as soon as that, that form itself is complete, we approve that policy as a whole. Does anyone have any objection to removing performance evaluations from the packet? Of approval?
I need to make a comment. Richard, chief, provided some revisions to policy 1038 and my medical leave. I don't see that, 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 that the revision we sent is attached here in the packet. This looks like the, the template packet or the template from Lexipol.
Sorry, which, which one, sir? I didn't, wasn't it?
1038, family medical leave.
We, there's the, the incorrect one is in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Ansel, will you, will you pull that as well? So I can make, so if you could pull performance evaluations and family and medical leave, we need to check that out before we do any approval.
Okay, so if there's no objections, we'll remove those two items. And then if, I'll ask if there's any other discussion about the consent agenda. I do want to, sorry. So within the consent agenda is our vouchers, right? And I just want to comment on one item that I have a little angst over and that is paying extra attorney fees. No offense, Mr. Davis. But we're, we're, we're basically paying Quinn on behalf of District Four. It, I don't know. It seems crazy to have two attorneys who have different opinions about things and are billing us separately, so.
Well, isn't that District Four's 25%?
I don't know how that works. I believe their understanding is in the ILA, we pay legal fees. I just, I just question whether the intent of that ILA was to say that, that they could go out and hire a separate attorney to at, at an endless amount. So I, I guess we just need to keep an eye on that. I, I would think that an RFA would make this go away, so.
That's all.
We'll, we'll work towards that. All right, sorry. That's the end of my comments. Anyone else? If, there are none, then I, all in favor of approving the consent agenda with the deletions of those two policies.
Looking for a second or an aye?
An aye, we're voting.
Aye, aye, it's fine.
It's unanimous then. Commissioner Meeting Reports is our next topic. Yes.
If I could, if we could just break away real quick and give Henry Hollander a chance to give a quick fire motions report and give you an update. That way we can cut him loose and spend less money.
Let him go tend to his flock.
Yes. You know, I would love to stay for the entire meeting. You know that.
I know. You miss us so badly.
Part of me just really misses this, this, this part of it, so.
Yeah, right up there with getting a root canal, right?
Or a colonoscopy. I can't remember what, one or the other. Yeah, I just thought I would come and give you kind of a, a brief snapshot of where I am since Jason contacted me and asked me to come back and kind of help you with the, the fire marshal opening that you have. And the direction I've been given is to kind of start putting, working with Joel Nielsen and start kind of grooming him to take over some of this stuff. Some of the stuff's pretty straightforward and Joel's already running with it. Some of it, like the mitigation and fire impact fees is gonna take, take a little bit longer than a few months, but hopefully my time will be more now and then we'll transition over. My time can be less and less until the time that Joel takes over the, the whole fire marshal procedure. So when I walked into this job, I walked into a desk that had quite a, quite a pile of backlog work. And I've been working hard to get that all caught up. I would say probably another two weeks I'll be, I'll be caught up. I'm only working Tuesdays and Thursdays. Just to be transparent, I do have some other commitments. I didn't know this was coming.
We should have. We warned you.
I'm also assisting the county with their quarantine and isolation site. I've been working for the COVID folks there since March.
Okay.
And so.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. So, so I feel, you know, probably four to six hours every Tuesday and Thursday is probably what we're looking at for a month or two. And then that will start to taper down is kind of my estimate to, to give you a kind of a snapshot of where we are. I've made contact with Tim with the City of Blaine and Will with Watcom County. I've got all that transitioned over. I've got, I'm so excited. I have a second cell phone again. This makes it so much fun. I've gotten logins to all of the software programs that particularly the one Blaine uses for permitting. I've done nine inspections already, required inspections on some building things. And, and a lot of these are radio repeater site sign-offs. You have to go and do a test on the radio repeater for fire alarms. Just so you know, the most customers with fire monitoring systems are switching off of landline transmission and going to radio repeater systems that work on the cell network. And so when they switch that out, disconnect the phone line, put in the radio repeater system, then the fire marshal has to go test that and sign that off. So instead of two ways to get to the alarm system, they have anywhere on, up to eight ways to, to contact the alarm system.
Wow, okay.
And the way they work actually is, uh, if there's businesses that were, are within radio range of each other, those radios will actually talk to each other and, and kind of do a shuttle that way. So it's a much improved system. The school system just upgraded. We actually upgraded three or four of ours at the fire department before I left. So I've done those and I'm currently working on 13 different projects in the county and the city. And the one item that needs some immediate attention is our Tegra software, the, the program that monitors all of the alarm sys, fire alarm systems, backflow testing, hood testing. We, we use a software program for that called Tegris. And it looks like it hasn't been touched in a, in a pretty long time. Right now there's 151 inspection records that need to be reviewed. And what, the, the glitch there is that the companies that go out and do the work for the businesses try to enter, they, they're supposed to enter the data and then it comes to us and then we approve it. No, they can't enter this year's because last year's hasn't been approved yet. And so I've got Joel started on that and I don't know how long it's gonna take him to get through 151, but it's gonna take a little while. And so quite a few of the phone calls on that part of the fire marshalling end is, is being driven by records not having been updated in quite a few months. Other than that, that's, that's kind of a snapshot of where, what I'm stepping into, what I'm looking at doing and where I'm going. So I, I'll answer any questions you might have.
I'm, I'm almost afraid to ask why the backlog. But that was just an oversight? Was there a glitch in our programming or was someone busy doing something else?
Uh, I, I too hesitate. I, all I can come up with is option C, everything else seems to work. You know, we had access to the program. I, I, I don't have an answer for you.
I think I can surmise. Thank you. Henry, it's a pleasure to see your smiling face again and welcome back. I, I told you, I told you you'd be back.
Yes, you did.
So that too came to fruition, but we do appreciate your expertise and your willingness to help us get back on track here. And I'm sure the business community and those that are in need of getting these permits done are much appreciative of the fact that we are currently working on them.
So far it's overwhelming. Everybody's happy to see me back. I don't know what that is. I don't know if that's good or that's bad, but yeah, it's, I think it'll all work out.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Henry is regretting that he ever told me. If you ever need anything, just give me a call. So, yep.
Well, I can tell you retirement's great.
Yeah.
I, I truly do enjoy retirement. On the other side, I certainly don't mind helping out when there's a need, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. We will turn you loose.
Okay, I'll probably pop into the next month and I give you an update of where we are.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. See you.
And then we'll move on. For the record, Commissioner Bosman logged on at 1:14. Welcome, Rich. You are now part of the formal meeting. And we were going to move on to Commissioner Meeting Reports. That was our, our next item. Does anyone else besides me have any Commissioner Meeting Reports?
Do not.
All right, so, um, Chief Vanderveen and I met with Chief Hewitt from City of Bellingham regarding the interlocal agreement for the medic program. As you all know, last month we had some questions pertaining to some ambiguous language as well as a mandate that we pay 100% of our leaving employees sick leave and vacation to the City of Bellingham. That was never negotiated with us. It was negotiated between the City of Bellingham and Local 106 on behalf of quote local 106 members in general. And for me personally, I thought it would be unfair for us to invoke a requirement on the district that was not consistent with our collective bargaining agreement that we had negotiated with our members. It was a great discussion. It was, it was, it was great to meet Chief Hewitt. We, I think we landed on a spot that we all felt that maybe the county had dropped the ball a little bit on this subject and we stepped into something a little bit before we had everything in writing and it looks as though we've got a verbal agreement from the county to make up that difference so that we would, we would pay the full amount, but the county would reimburse us for that amount, which is over what our collective bargaining agreement requires us to do. So the employee goes across whole, which is a good thing and, and we would have to sort of negotiate how that works in the future. But for now, since we're in the middle of this, we're just waiting for the county to put something in writing, correct, chief, that would guarantee that that is accomplished. So I think it's kind of a win-win here. The county has a few extra dollars laying around from GEMT money that they're getting as well for ALS transports. Bellingham turns that money over to the county for the medic one transports. So this amount of money that we're asking for, I think is, is fair and it's not a huge amount in the overall picture to the county's budget. Is that fair to say, chief?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, um, had a weekly meeting with Chief Vanderveen just to get a pulse on sort of what's going on on a regular basis. And then a meeting with one of, a potential commissioner candidate who appeared to be quite a very good candidate for us, but ultimately had some family issues that might require him to be in Southern California more often than he wants to be. And so he couldn't make that commitment. So we've got a few others we'll talk about in the future, but anyway, that, that person was unable to commit to putting in an application. The next item is Local 106 report. I got a, a text from the local saying that they have no report this month. And we'll move to legal issues. Richard Davis, anything new?
No, nothing new. As I mentioned at the beginning, you're still under this governor proclamation until the 1st of September, likely to be extended with regard to these remote meetings. That's about it.
All right. Thank you. Unfinished business, the 1819 audit. We have enough data on that, chief?
Yep, we are nearing completion. And the last remaining items are, I use the word issues, but it's probably, it, it sounds a little more horrible than it probably is. They have some, we're looking for documentation and collecting documentation for the auditor about some large capital purchases that were made or larger capital purchases that were made in 18 and 19 and just searching back some documentation. Notably, the biggest one that we're looking for is a purchase of bunker gear that was made. Apparently it was made. We, we jumped on somebody else's bid and we're just tracking down the last paperwork to give to the auditor and we should be good to go.
Good. I'm assuming the question was why we didn't go out to bid by ourselves?
Correct.
Okay, but, but we were able to tag on to someone else?
Yep.
Okay. Are we done with the Dakota Creek Bridge issue for now? Can?
We are. The Dakota Creek Bridge, shortly after the last meeting, I want to say the next day, if not that afternoon, we actually received in the mail our permits for the three of our engines, the ladder truck and a tender that's currently stationed, Station 61 was not given approval, but all three of our Crimson apparatus, which are currently stationed at 69, 63 and 61 are able to cross that bridge. The reason we did all three is because as maintenance is done, they're moved around and that permit is tied to that actual, the VIN number. And so all three of those apparatus have that permit in their rig and they are, they are able to cross the bridge as needed.
And that for a duration of how long? Six months, a year?
One year.
One year. All right.
Annual permit.
Great. So Crawford, thank you for your efforts in helping us solve this problem.
Just talking to the right people and finding loopholes.
Yeah. Yeah, I wish we could get the tender and the ladder across, but we can, we can load up three or more people on an engine and get them over there. So that's a good thing. Thanks, chief, for following up on that. That's, that's really good news.
Thanks, John. Thank you, John.
City of Blaine Fire Marshal Services Interlocal Agreement.
I have that here and I will distribute that to you gentlemen after, we'll get it scanned in and send it out to you so you can read it and it'll be on the, excuse me, on the docket for next month approval. I also received a call this morning from the Chief of Police in Blaine and he and I are gonna need to get together. It sounds like there's some additional stuff that I maybe wasn't aware of that involved ordinance in the City of Blaine. So I need to track that down and, and see if that affects this agreement in any way.
Okay. All right. Watcom County Paramedic Training Interlocal Agreement. We had a little discussion about this earlier and we're waiting for the final document. Is that correct?
Yes, and we can lump both, both the Watcom County Paramedic Training and the City of Bellingham Paramedic Training into the same discussion that we're waiting, like Commissioner Ansel said, we're waiting for something on paper. We've learned, we've learned, I've learned my lesson and I need something on paper before we can move forward with anything. Mr. Davis, I just sent you back that copy of the, what we had as the final, but it won't actually be the final. It'll be a little bit revised once and you'll get copies of all that to review yet again before, before we move forward.
So, so the, the last remaining pieces are the little bit of language issues with the Bellingham one as far as defining training and
Experience, correct.
And we had that discussion with Chief Hewitt and he's willing to make those changes and, and we're gonna leave the current language about making the sick leave and vacation hall once we get written confirmation from Watcom County that they will reimburse us for that expense. In addition to the up to a maximum of $103,000 in work replacement for these employees while they're gone.
Yes, and, and as I said in my chief's report, they've, they've moved the, they moved the agreement far enough ahead in the process that where we can begin that to recapture those funds. So staff is working. I think they're actually already done with reimbursement up to, to year to date for the two gentlemen that are in, in the paramedic training programs.
So we've been covering that cost up till now and have not yet been reimbursed.
Correct, so.
Right. Very good. Anyone have any questions about those two agreements? Do you want to wait till they're finalized before? I think we've already authorized you to sign the, the Watcom County one. Do we want to go ahead and authorize him to sign the Bellingham one once this is complete so that if it comes in before our next meeting, we can move it forward?
I would be fine with that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. So can I have a motion to authorize the chief to sign the City of Bellingham Paramedic Training Interlocal Agreement? One move complete.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Davis, do you have any issues with that?
No, I don't.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Next item under unfinished business is fire commissioner interest. We have one, two, I think, three letters are, are in writing of people interested. We have two that we've, the chief has spoken to or someone has or communicated with Jenny about that we haven't actually got official applications from.
Correct.
So the, the closing date on, on those applications is the 28th of August. My hope is, is to schedule a special meeting in early September to interview these candidates. I know last time, Rich, you and Chief Purnette and Larry did the interviews. Was there anyone else in that? Remember? None of the three of you were there?
It was the, the three of us.
Okay, so in that case, it didn't require a special meeting. If, if I read our policies and procedures, we are, as a board, are responsible for filling this position, which would then exclude the chief from participating in that unless we chose to do that. But it would be nice to have three of us there at least. And then that would require us to call a special meeting and conduct these interviews in an open public meeting. That's what our policy says. Mr. Davis, is that necessarily a requirement of, in the wax or anything? Or is that just something that we've decided to do?
There is no provisions in the statutes or, or any other, you know, regulations that deal with that. So you can, you kind of do whatever you you kind of do whatever you you want to do. When you talk about your policy, I assume you're talking about the commissioner guidelines, which I don't have on my screen, but the commission could choose to waive that and have the chief sit in and be part of the process if you wanted.
Right, so I, what's your guys' thoughts? I mean, here, we're we're hiring somebody that's going to be working with the chief. I know he's a busy guy. I don't What are your thoughts on on who should be on this review panel? Rich, are you interested or available? Bosman?
Yeah, I'd like to be in that.
All right, and I I would too. John or Scott, are are you interested or have time?
Sure, I do. I do, depending on the dates and times.
Okay.
And my schedule is pretty much open.
All right. So if more than two of us from the board do it, it's a special meeting. Chief, I I can throw it to you. Do you have a desire to choose?
I actually think that's kind of a conflict of interest in me choosing my own boss. I, you guys are representative representative of the people and I work for you, so I have full faith that you guys will pick, the board will pick the right person.
Appreciate that. So let's, let's see what the numbers are after the twenty eight. And then we'll work with Jenny to do some scheduling. I don't know if we would use that same, what was it called? A doodle poll or?
Yep, I can do another doodle poll.
I'll I'll try to fill it out this time.
Right.
So after the twenty eighth, be be looking for a poll as to some early dates in September that we could have a special meeting to interview these candidates.
We just want to do it before our commission meeting in September, the same day, maybe just earlier?
Well, I I I mean, if we have four or five applicants, it it could take several hours, so. We're gonna gonna kind of pull off of some of the questions that were used last time.
Right.
And I I think those were like thirty minute interviews, weren't they, Rich? So I don't know that we want to do, you know, two and a half hours of interviews and then go into our regular meeting, but well, I guess we can see when it when it comes up. I kind of prefer to do it separately and then be able to appoint that individual at our next meeting and have a little time to maybe do some background research, which I do have a question for you, Mr. Davis, is are 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 we allowed to do background checks on these candidates?
I think you could, yeah.
You could, yeah.
There's nothing that would prevent doing that, nothing that would prohibit that.
Yep. I mean, at least just maybe a brief look see. I would hate
I believe it's an employee, so you can do background checks on employees.
Yeah, well, I just know when you're elected, we don't get a background check.
I I've never heard of it being done before.
And I'm not talking the full like hiring process like we do for employees, but you know, maybe just a a quick review of YouTube or something. There there seems to be a lot of information out there. Maybe we could just look behind the scenes a little bit. I don't know. We'll we'll see. Are you guys okay with that plan after the twenty eighth? Send out a request for a meeting and then conduct those interviews?
Yeah. Yeah, in my experience from the last one, if there's several of us there, it's going to be all of thirty minutes at least for each person.
Right.
Because I I think we want to read ahead and research what we've got and and not hurry it, so thirty minutes is the, you know, very much the minimum rather than the maximum, I think.
Fair enough. In the meantime, I'm going to have Jenny send out to the four of us that former questions that were used when I was appointed. And I think there's probably a few modifications that we can make in that, but if you could send your suggestions back for other questions that you might want to have asked or questions on there that you would want to delete from the existing document. Then we can move, we can be doing that simultaneously right now before the twenty eighth. And and get that questionnaire finalized, so we'll be ready to go when the meeting hits and we'll all kind of be on the same page as to what we're going to be asking the candidates. All right. Regional Fire Authority Committee. So we have formed the committee. John, myself and Scott are the primary with Rich as an alternate. And I know that Chief, you sent out the poll and I didn't fill it out. Sorry. I had it up on my computer and I somehow ignored it. But you were looking at potentially Wednesday, the twenty sixth as a first meeting?
Correct. Yep, Wednesday, the twenty sixth.
And that would be in the afternoon, say three, three, three P M? Scott, you already, well, I don't know that we had a time. I think we just had
We didn't have a time, but that should be good. Yeah, I don't have anything scheduled on that date.
Okay, so that works for you, John?
Yeah, that that should work. Three o'clock, three o'clock in the afternoon. That that's that's fine with me. I appreciate that.
And that was good with District Four's group, correct?
I I believe, yes, that that date was good. I will send out a meeting invite as soon as we're done here and we'll if we need to move it around a little bit, we can, but yeah, that day should be good for everybody.
So rather, okay, and and a little couple of housekeeping things while we're on that. We had sent information out to both Ms. Parks and Jenny on attending that meeting. I'm wondering as a sort of committee, if we should meet first just the six of us or seven. Jason, are you involved in that as well?
I, I, yeah, I would be there.
And then decide how we want to do note taking and appointing a chairperson and hiring an outside consultant, et cetera. We do that. And then look at future schedules. Does that seem like what a normal process would be, Mr. Davis? Is that?
I think so. Yeah, I think at the first meeting, I think you could have some discussion about how often you're going to meet. Who the chair is going to be for the meetings. I, you know, pass a if you're going to hire a consultant, as I suggested, you're probably going to wait to get the consultant on board to line up the schedules. You're not going to be able to do that at that first meeting, but then that could wait if you, if you can agree upon a consultant and get that consultant retained. Maybe say that to the next meeting. But these are open public meetings. You need to be, there are an open public meeting for twenty one, an open public meeting for District Four. So you need to notice those as special meetings.
Right, right. So and then as 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 far as necessarily keeping notes, they're going to be recorded anyway, so. To have a person sitting there physically taking those notes is probably not as important as it may have been in my past life. I I just think that, I think we as a committee ought to make those decisions together and not just start loading this thing up with with people without talking about it.
The statute also talks about adopting rules and other operating procedures at the first meeting. And I believe I might have a set of you know, a template. Here, I'll look for that and see if I can import those to you for something to talk about.
The state fire commissioner has a like a checklist booklet that we should probably use as well.
Yeah, the, so the state, I believe the one that's on the state fire commissioners might be from the twenty fifteen version. There's a twenty nineteen version that the state fire chiefs has. That I'll send to you after this meeting. I sent it to somebody else that was interested, but yeah, it's got all, it's got all the templates and frequently asked questions and a lot of probably good stuff to discuss the first meeting.
Sure. Fair enough. All right. Anything else on the RFA committee? All right, we'll move out of unfinished business into new business. Resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen cancellation of warrants. So I guess we've visited this issue multiple times. And it's my understanding that we've had another check lost in the mail?
Yes.
What would it take to get it to move to electronic invoicing?
It's it's already in progress. Since you and I had previously discussed this a little bit during our our meeting that you had mentioned during the commissioner meetings. I came back and talked to staff and we're we're getting that. It's going to be, it's going to take a little bit. It's not something we can do in a month. But we are, we are starting the process of how to do electronic fund transfers for a bulk of our bills.
Okay, it just, to me, in this day and age, when you can deposit checks using your cell phone that we're sending paper check through the mail and and I swear, almost every other month, we've got a lost one and and cancel warrant, so I appreciate if we could look into that and get a little more safe with our fund transfers.
And to be fair, for just for general knowledge, I guess, it sounds like the auditor's office was not in favor of this even just a few years ago. Shocking that wheels and government turn a little slow, but now their opinion has changed and now E F Ts are looked at as a more acceptable way to transfer or make payments.
All right, yeah, like you say, the wheels, the wheels do turn slowly. So with that said, we have three warrants. That need to be canceled and there's a resolution before us. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Favor?
Aye.
All right.
Unanimous?
You know, I've been doing that electronically for five, six years in my business and it's it's really simple, so. If you want, want me to stop by and talk to the staff about that, I can help. It's real easy.
That would be, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a bad idea at all. Some of us have some experience with it.
Great, thank you, Rich. Resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen, we have some surplus equipment, Chief. Would you like to tell us about?
Yes, sir. So we've got four pieces of equipment here. Pictures are on following page there. So we've got a nineteen eighty-seven service truck that the shop has been using that was replaced earlier this year with with the new, the new shop truck. We've also got a nineteen seventy-six Van Pelt L T I ladder truck. Which has pretty much been a parade rig for the last little bit. It's it's, it's time to go. An eighty-eight, nineteen eighty-eight Pierce Aero fire engine and a nineteen eighty-nine Darley duplex fire engine. Both of which we get no, we get, we get no points for any of these pieces of fire apparatus. We continue to do maintenance and insure them and they, they don't roll, they don't provide any, any they're not in reserve or anything like that. They are just extraneous pieces of equipment at this point, so I'm asking to surplus them.
Fair enough. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Any questions or discussions? And Chief gave us a pretty good review of.
Hey, does anybody have a bone of contention if I sit down with the county sheriff's department? I I got a little bit of flack about donating that ambulance to Mexico. And apparently the search and rescue team in Watkins County needs a piece of apparatus. That rescue rig might be something that they could use.
Is this like to donate or to?
Yeah, kind of like what we did with Mexico. Do it similar with county.
Do we have a value on this thing, Chief? Yet?
We don't, and I don't think it's going to be valuable.
It's an old rig with, I'm assuming, a lot of miles on it.
Yes. But it's been well maintained. I mean, the mechanics, it was their rig, so they
Right.
I want to say it was the best of the fleet.
Mr. Davis, your input on us gifting apparatus.
Well, you know, if it doesn't have, it depends on if it has much market value. If it's got a market value that, you know, you could actually recover your costs and there's an expense to put it in a magazine and advertising and selling it. If there's, you know, if it's a modest amount of money, then, you know, you can, you can pass a resolution. We've done it before. We did it with this last one. We just said that the cost is doesn't make it worth, you know, trying to sell it and we are able to then just dispose of it for no consideration. But you have to make, I recommend that you make a finding to that effect and there'd be a little bit of investigation on staff's part to just verify that.
So if if we do that, is the board though willing to reach out through John to search and rescue?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. John, if you want to work with the chief on trying to get a a potential value, maybe they don't even want it. I don't know.
Yeah, let me, let me get with Jason and I'll get with the sheriff's department and see what we do.
Right. You you seem to be the guy that can get stuff done around here, so. We'll turn it over to you. Correspondence? We had a couple of letters regarding the G E M T issue. We have had a review by our legal and I think we may have further discussion of this in executive session, if that's okay. Based on District Four's last meeting, I think there was a another response that they alluded to at the end of their meeting after executive session and I'm a little confused again, but my understanding is, is that Chief, you're supposed to be working with Ms. Parks to revise or send us a letter regarding the G E M T issue again?
Correct. She and I are meeting next Tuesday and we're going to further refine kind of what District Four's expectations and wishes are. And bring that forward to the twenty one.
All right. Our next board meeting is the seventeenth of September. Is that probably going to be via Zoom, I'm assuming? Is everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
All right, it is officially on my calendar. Again, items for next meeting, uh, let's see here. Those policies, uh, that I'm just going to let those float in and out. Those two specific ones can just be piled in with others as needed, so. Um, I don't know that we need to address them specifically. I'm sure we'll get another update on the audit. Uh, we'll be able to review the Fire Marshal Services Agreement. You've been authorized to take care of the other two inter local agreements for the paramedics, so we can pull those off. We should be appointing a new interim fire commissioner. Uh, next meeting and maybe a report on our, our F A committee. Anyone else have anything else I'm missing here?
Uh, would there possibly be some action needed if we're going to donate that service truck to?
Oh, on the, uh, on the surplus thing, uh, if, if indeed we need. Um, to declare it of, of no significant value, um, by resolution. Is that how we did that last time?
Yeah.
So if, if necessary, then it would just be on as, as a, I think a new business item. We. We have this lingering commissioner laptop issue. I would like to just declare that as stolen property and. Remove it from our agenda.
If you do that, you should notify the auditor.
Okay. Does anyone got any issues with that?
Doesn't need to be in motion or are you just looking for a ye or a nay?
Well, I, I mean, it is what it is, is. Uh, the person kept one of our laptops and we've asked for them to return it. We've gotten no response. It's stolen property, so. Um, I guess if everyone's in agreement, we can, uh, direct Chief to just notify the auditor that we have a stolen laptop. And made attempts to try to recover it, uh, with no success.
We going to file a stolen property report with Blaine P D or the sheriff's department or?
I'd be sheriff's department and we've, yes, well, we reached out to them already. We'll just go ahead and file a report.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right, perfect. Um, last item is executive session, um, per R C W forty two point three zero point one one zero. Subsection. One, I. To discuss with legal counsel, agency managing to, uh. Enforcement actions. Or litigation potential. I don't expect this to take much more than about fifteen minutes. And all of us can attend that. With the exception of Jim, so.
Okay, let me take us off YouTube here.